He didn't have to tell you twice.
No.
Yeah, they would come in that little closet over there, they'd say that, they'd say, is that where your electric panel is?
All right, it is five o'clock, if everyone will please stand, I'm gonna ask Ben if you'll lead us a word of prayer, and Becky if you'll follow with a lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our most gracious loving Father, we thank you so much, and we're humbled by the blessing of another day. Thank you for all the blessings you give us daily, Father, we thankful for the bountiful rain, and being able to see your creation come to life, Father. We just asked you be with us tonight during this meeting, that we may conduct ourselves in this meeting in a manner that's pleasing to you. Father, we just ask that you be with all the students and the faculty as they enjoy their summer break, Father, just watch over, guard and protect each one. Father, we love you, and we thank you for loving us, we ask that you forgive us where we fail you. Most of all, we love you, thank you for your, your son and the saving grace of his blood, Father, we pray all this in your most holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let me see it. It's time, all of us, Mr. Killser, to call the robe, please.
Shane Connor?
Here.
Ben Couples?
Here.
Dr. Kim Scott?
Here.
Becky Hutcherson?
Here.
Nora Spring?
Here.
Randy Cherry?
Here.
All right, there's a quorum present, so we'll officially call our meeting to order for the month of June, and we begin with a recommendation to accept the board agenda.
I make a motion to accept the board agenda.
One second.
A motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion about the agenda at all? All right, if there is none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as is, say aye. Any opposed? All right, so the agenda is set. Next is, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda in your packet.
I make a motion to approve consent.
One second.
Motion is made and seconded, there is no discussion on that, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Delegations, I don't believe we have any delegations who have requested to address the board tonight, so we'll move right into our celebration segment, which, a lot of things to celebrate as we're coming off a school year, and Mr. Killser kind of spotlight some of these, including some of our athletic successes.
Well, and just as I shared with your agenda, our baseball team, which we've got some folks here that can talk probably with more details, but they had a great run this school year, had a sectional win, that's like what we used to call it, sub-state win versus Lawson, with the doubleheader, seven-one-nine-three, and I was working in my office when they had that second game won, and it was like fireworks were going off outside with everybody hauling and carrying on, so it was a great run for our baseball team, especially with Mike Golf as a exiting head coach, to have a chance to not only go to the state during his final year, but then also have his son play, so had an opportunity to, to experience that with his son. Unfortunately, we had a loss at the first round of the spring fling, with two losses to Upperman and South Gibson, and, but it's a great run for our school, great run for our baseball team in particular, and for the high school, and I know it's memories for that high school team. Then also, our boy soccer team, if you remember last year, the boy soccer team did make it to the state championship, but this year they came up a little short during the sectional game with a real close loss to Hume Fall out of Nashville with four-three. So, but still, another exceptional year for them with the district championship, and I believe the regional championship also. So, we've had some really big successes with two of our boys' sporting teams. And then I included here, which was part of the Chester County Independent News, had a seventh grader, Mason Myers, parents are Christopher and Megan Myers. We have a golf team at the middle school grades now, the junior high grades, and Davis Parton is their head coach. And Mason finished with a tie for sixth place, with the score of seventy-seven, which was just five over par, so it's a great score. And he also was the top performing seventh grader in that tournament, so wanted to just give a quick shout out, you got a prospect that's probably gonna be playing high school golf.
That's pretty impressive, seventy-seven, that's, that's good.
That's really good. So, again, we, a- as a former athlete and as a former coach, those are fond memories that you cherish for a lifetime. It's a great way of bringing your community together. There may be opposition with which side of the aisle you are and your politics, but fortunately in Chester County, everybody's go big blue. So, it's, it's wonderful to see the success, and you know, the anticipation for what future is gonna hold. We just look forward to continuing seeing those opportunities for our student athletes to succeed, and have those memories cherished for a lifetime, so.
All right, and I guess Mary's mentioning too, we wanna talk about our new staff.
Yes, yes, well, and they're both here, serving, they're, here they are before their contract actually starts on July one. They're here serving, so have a chance for Dr. Nathan Hall and Ms. Natalie Lacks, who is the tag team for the Chester County Middle School, you might wanna just take a second to introduce yourself.
Nice to meet you guys, I'm just down the road in Hardman County, so much closer, excited to be a part of your team. I've been in the middle school world pretty much my entire career, I taught at Alder Middle School for a, a long stint, and I was in Fayette County last year as an AP, just thankful to be closer to home and my own babies. I have a house full, three stepchildren, two of my own, we are a huge sports family. Just come back from a big baseball trip, trying to check off some MLB stadiums with my husband and I, so, that's just pretty much the only hobby I have time for, I look forward to working with the fourth and fifth graders, that'll be a new experience for me, my sixth or eighth grade stint, I feel like has prepared me for that, so I'm just excited to be here, so thank you.
Nathan Hall, I, I worked at the high school, came in in January, had the opportunity to change this other position. I retired from Mississippi in January, and, and I've done a little bit of everything, I, I, I'm a little bit twisted because I really enjoy the middle school grades, every, in, in middle school, upper elementary, however you wanna call it. My wife is also an educator, she just changed job, she has less sense than I do, she, she was elementary assistant principal, and now is moving to high school assistant principal. So, I don't know about that, but anyway, well, my wife had two daughters, one of them plays college soccer, the other one's a, will be a senior at Corinth High School, and I'm just glad to be here, everybody, and I, I'll say what I've said every time anybody's asked me about this particular school, is that it's like a public-private school. So, I, I, I'm very blessed to have the opportunity and, and looking forward to it. And so I've got the chance to meet a couple of chess and, and a couple of other kids there at the high schools. I've been, I've enjoyed my time thus far.
Very good, we're excited to have you guys.
Yeah, we're glad, we're glad to be here.
Absolutely. All right, well, the next thing we have tonight is an opportunity, when the public chooses, if they have an agenda item they wanna address, that opportunity is presented at each meeting on an actionable item, I believe we have anyone on that list tonight, so we'll move right into our business items, which tonight, being this time of year, is always heavy on board policy revisions, those that have been coming through, obviously, the actions from the state legislature in the, in the spring, and others that we look at. So, you have quite a bit of these in front of you in your board packet. What we've done in the past, where we can do this, we can do this, which one, we have to separately because of an option situation, but we can look through these, answer any questions, I'll have Mr. Killser address them as he sees that we need to, but then we can approve them all with one motion, except for the electronic device change, because that is, the legislative action is causing us to have to update our policy, and so we have to choose which route we wanna take, basically, so let me turn it over to you to, to comment, and then we can look into the approval of this.
Do, do we wanna do this one first then, the electronic device?
We, we can, and then you can, I mean, we can collectively do the rest. Now, with, if you turn to page nine in your, in your agenda file, this is policy six-point-three-one-two. When I met with Shane yesterday, I shared with him that I had solicited from administrators, since they're gonna be the ones having to enforce these policies, give them the preference, or ask their opinion about which one they prefer. Now, of the two policies that is included in your agenda, six-point-three-one-two-eight and six-point-three-one-two-B, those are from the T double double A, taking consideration with the change in the law. The change in the law reflected in that public chapter one oh three addresses that no student, whether it's a wearable device, like a, an Apple Watch? Or a device, are, are to have access to it during instructional time. Except for, and the conditions are, which, you know, in, in years past, we've discussed that here, when we've taken this path also, in case of an IEP or a five oh four plan that may dictate that, or some other condition, we have to also, based on that one oh three, public chapter one oh three, we have to also publicize how we would communicate in case of emergency with the students not having access to the phone. You know, cause to reassure the families that we're not saying that their child can't be communicated with, but you know, the old school of going to the landline, if you know from most of our work experience, when you were in high school, Becky, we had payphones, we had landlines everywhere, and payphones are non-existent. We used to have two in the high school cafeteria, and two in the lobby, years ago. But that was before everybody had their cellphone now, so it became obsolete and they removed those. So, we have to have the opportunity to make sure that any emergency situation can be communicated. So, going back to what I was saying, I solicited the administrators to weigh in, and I'll start with the, the two groups that were probably the most, I won't say confrontational, but the ones where the students may be pushed back the most, the high school and the junior high. Of course, Renee's here also, so she can speak on her own behalf. But the high school, Clay is the one that spoke first as the building principal, that he had appreciated the stance that the Warren County Board of Ed took. Now, again, I made a hard copy of that, cause I didn't include that in your packet initially, cause I didn't know where their feedback would go. I'm not saying that we have to just change the letterhead from saying Warren County to Chester County, but the premise is that they have just started this past school year, they did it for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, based on the conversation that, that Clay and I had with their building principal at the high school at Warren County High School, that they have no, students are not allowed to have their devices on themselves any time during the school day, once they arrive. Either they can store it in a vehicle if they drive, or they have a way of collecting those devices during the morning time. It's one of those early housekeeping jobs, and then they retrieve it at the end of the day. Now, that format of how they do that is a costly event that they went into at Warren County. But what I would say was, from Clay's position, he initially likes this policy because it does remove any access to any communication device, or any device, from the start of the school day to the end of the day. Now, as he also added as a, I guess, a, an addition to his position, knowing, not knowing how the other administrators would have, because he understands that policy changes happen to all the schools. It's not a situation in this case where we're gonna say something for the high school, we've done it before for dress code, but say something for the high school, maybe junior high, and then something different for the elementary. But his position was to choose, if he didn't do this one, or something similar to this level of, of prohibition, he was in favor of six-point-three-one-two-B, which was the more liberal of the two choices, because that's the one that distinguishes the elementary grades from the secondary grades. The, again, the policy, or excuse me, the, the public chapter reads, which both policies speak to, is not having access during instructional time. And the, I guess the ambiguity in it was to where some of the administrators said that you have access for the students to go back to it in non-instructional time. Thinking about the high school, between classes and transition, cafeteria time, those would still be based on six-point-three-one-two-B as in boy, you'd have that opportunity. Now, six-point-three-one-two-A would be a little bit more restrictive, and there's not a dis, a dissemination between elementary grades and secondary grades. High school principal made that stance, then his two assistant principals said, we agree with Clay. Junior high, I heard first from Jared, she made. Jared, again, said this would be his favorite approach, being restrictive from it altogether. But as I shared with Renee, you know, understand that whatever policy we have here, if one of these two, the A or the B choice, is what the board decides here, nothing stops them from elevating a more restrictive plan of action. As I was asking Emily earlier on the lower grades, going back to Nathan and Natalie, the fact that you've got Kate third, or four or five students, you may not have as many or as much temptation with the cellphone availability.
Talking about they could do more restrictions, but there's always somebody gonna say, what's board policy?
Well, the board policy is a minimum, yeah, that's always.
So, you're saying if they had B as the policy, a particular school could elevate it?
Yeah, they could. Now, it's a more challenging. They'd rather have it to where, and I say they, let me go back and give more feedback, cause I've just said at the high school, and Renee, Renee, do you wanna say anything right now, or?
Well, I guess it's just our main concern is during those times of lunch, that we have a different mentality going on with kids at the junior high versus the high school, and I still, I can see the issue of like drop-offs in the morning and during lunch, that there might be some cyberbullying, or photos, videos taken during that time because they're not mentally capable of saying all this wrong, it shouldn't be getting that.
And there's less oversight. When you're in a classroom, you've got this number of kids, I mean, and I know they're being watched at lunch and stuff, but, but not like you're in a classroom with your kids.
Well, the public chapter was very explicit talking about only during instructional time was the restriction. Now, they also set the bar lower than what, back years ago, when I was principal of the high school, you couldn't have it out at all, couldn't be out on your table even if it was turned off, that's not, but I mean, you'd have to have it stored away, backpack of wherever it's stored away. Warren County carries it to a much higher level, they have the means in-house to store it, and it's a locked device, I had done the pricing, but it's not cheap, what they've done.
Is this, is this per classroom, I'm assuming?
They, the way they explained it, or the way the principal explained to Clay and myself, that each homeroom or first period teacher collects the devices, and then through the process, you, you had certain, and I can't remember all the details, but it was some piece of, of hardware at certain locations that you could put in some type of code and get a key that would unlock your device. The devices were locked in a special situation, I'd have to do more research if that was the path we took. But it was something that, that afforded the, the, the privacy and the safety and security of knowing that your device is not just sitting in a teacher's desk. Now, I'll say this, at the high school, I know I've seen it when I've done observations, some of the teachers at the high school had one of these, used to be what we'd have for like calculators, little holders, and they would just, because of the classroom practice, it was just part of their routine, put you, put your phone up in here, you know, and they would hold it. Now, it would be visible for everybody, maybe behind where the teacher sat, so I mean, you would see it. So, it wouldn't be like they'd have access to it at the back door where somebody could sneak by and like go on a bathroom break and rob somebody of, of their phone. But, but now I've seen that out of one of the high school teachers.
At, at the high school level, if we, if you had your homeroom class that is where your phone was stored for the day, how much time would you need in the afternoon in order to recover your phone before you caught the bus, whatever?
Well, there's, that, that's why the, the devices that they have at Warren County was at strategic locations throughout the building that they would give them access to, cause again, some were closer to go like at the end of West Hall, be quicker to go out this way to my car. So, I don't know all the details about that, I just know that, well, and let me say this, elementary, the K-three principals all weighed in, they like Warren County's. Now, again, the likelihood of them having to enforce it is gonna be slim. So.
It's easier to enforce nothing, can't have them at all at the high school level. To me, that would be easier, because if you allow some pictures to do the slips, it's kind of what we discussed previous, before the state come, come up with it again, but it may, it's just like, I mean, you, you start out with good intention, and then after a while, you get tired of beating your head on the wall, so you just let it happen. Or if you say, no, we're not gonna do it, that, in my mind, that would be easier to, you know, it would, it would stick easier. You'd say, this is how we're gonna do it, you're not gonna want to have your phone by the time you get to school. Now, that does include Apple Watches, any kind of.
That's the public chapter includes Apple, any type of, as it says, personal electronic device, anything that you can communicate with.
But what about our athletes? I just feel like they need something to tell mom when to come pick up, I mean.
Well, now, Warren County, again, as you, well, and I know I just gave it to you this afternoon, but they had it from the start of the school day to the end of the school day, is not accessible for the student. Now, again, some cases, if, if, if one of the children needs to have a doctor's statement, or a doctor visit, and they're leaving at one o'clock, they'd have a means of getting their phone or something. But it's not like you lose it if you don't have access to it, if you leave early, but.
How expensive.
I don't know. I was, I was, I was shocked initially that Clay, Clay heard this principal at a virtual meeting, PD session, speak about how impactful it was. And I was shocked that Clay was in favor of it. Because I know that it's gotten really flexible for kids to have access to their phones, even during instructional time, I've seen them, like maybe the teacher, the last five minutes, the last ten minutes, or maybe even more frequently than that.
Lunchtime, they.
Yeah, get to use it, you know.
Does this policy, whichever one we go with, apply to the educator as well as the student?
Well, the educator, that's what Dr. Hall was asked, we have a policy, it does not apply to the educator. This applies just to the students, but now, we do have a policy, it's in the section five, that says that no educator, no staff member has access to their phone when they are in teaching, offering instruction, or when they're monitoring students. They're not supposed to have access to it. They can have it during their planning time, or during their own personal time, but not otherwise. And of course, you know, that would just break it, you know, whatever restriction happened to the students, you better have at least, at least some effort to be consistent with the adults in the room. But the adults in the room have a little bit more, well, again, I would, I'm not saying we embrace, like if, if you guys thought that the Warren County approach was more appropriate, I'm not saying that everything with their, how the, the discipline is handled would be embraced. It wouldn't, again, I'm not saying just make it where Chester County instead of Warren County, but for the.
The restriction of it.
The restrictions of it, you know, we've got the, the discipline code with it. They, well, I'm, I'm jumping around now, for the, what I was wanting to say is for a staff member to violate section five code related to the same issue, it starts with an oral warning, leading up to a letter of reprimand, leading up to suspension, possibly determination, if somebody was so committed to stay the wrong course.
Let me ask you a question. What if we tabled just this till next month, to get a little more information about the cost? It seems like the principals want it, and that surprises me, it did, it did really, but I agree with him, I agree with him. I know most parents and kids won't probably, but they're supposed to be here to get educated and stay off the phones. So, could we do that, Shane? I mean, to get a little more information about where you can store the devices, and the cost of it, and what it may?
Yeah, and I would say this, the way public chapters are written, of course, it's not gonna impact us with this issue specifically, but the way the public chapters are written, July one usually cranks it up. However, we're not in school in July one, so we do have time. We got the July meeting, that we could discuss it, but we would, you know, we would have to have something in the works decided that meeting, because you gotta get time for to publicize this, especially being that close, cause it's, that meeting is the July the twenty-second, if we stay with the tentative plan that we have. So, you're getting close, I mean, the next, that same week is our countywide in-service. So, you, you run the risk, again, if you read back to the public chapter, you're only talking about instructional time. The principals that have weighed in, elementary school, middle school, our middle school, four and five, and then the junior high, they like the restriction, they don't like the flexibility that you have with the non-instructional time having access to it, because it would create a greater temptation to get it out and abuse it.
Yeah, this sentence, these devices are being used by students as a means of cheating on tests, taking inappropriate pictures and videos of students and staff, that bothers me, for sharing and posting across the internet, and there's threatening and bullying, just like Renee said, and engaging in an excessive amount of social interaction during instructional time. So, that sounds like the reason why they. And we're seeing some of that here.
Yeah, Natalie, Natalie spoke.
That, your question, okay, so last year in Fayette County, we did implement this fully in our schools. We, we, we used a much cheaper option, we didn't have lock boxes and safes or anything like that. It did take some extra hands from the faculty. I'm not quite sure, being new here, you know, what y'all's specific struggles are, we did have those, the posts, the inappropriateness, and I will say drastically, we nearly eliminated that, fights, instigation, you know, any social media post, anything like that, we still had them, however, it was happening outside of school hours, not our baby. As far as taking them, the storage process, like I said, extra faculty on staff, you know, they kinda had to be on board, the buy-in from the faculty. We had like car riders, bus riders, those specific duties. We bought just the clear tubs with the snapping lids, labeled them like sixth, seventh, eighth grade for middle school. Car rider, car riders, when they come in, they would put their name on room teacher on a slip of paper, phone, Apple Watches, Beats, iPads, cause they sure started bringing everything they had at the house, put it all in a big gallon Ziploc bag, put it in their grade box. The bus drop-off was in grade sections by their homeroom teachers, and they did the same. When they come in, they put their name on slip of paper, all their devices in a gallon bag, put it in their white boxes. Of course, we had faculty there monitoring all of those boxes. After morning drop-off, all of that was over, myself, it was kind of my baby, so I combined everything into the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade boxes, and they were stored in our testing room, and only one faculty member had that key, so I locked them into the testing room. During the day, if we had kids that checked out, you know, I would walk that kid over to the room, unlock it, they got their device and left with it, and I locked the room back. I'm not really sure, you know, how your buildings are set up, but you know, cost incurred for us, we already had the giant rolling carts, so really, we, we bought big gallon Ziploc bags, I used the giant paper cutter and cut up mounds of slips of paper, and then we bought. mounds of slips of paper, um, and then we bought just the big giant tubs with the lids and we had.
I mean, the clear tubs.
Clear tubs, I made the labels, I made like sixth, seventh, eighth, and I made color-coded, you know, for each grade, for the homeroom boxes. And those three carts kept everything there. And all of those carts and stuff went into that testing room, locked it up afternoon time. Um, initially, it took us about fifteen minutes, we, we shaved time off the, the easier it got, but, you know, our day ended at three thirty. So, like three ten, we had some TAs in the building, um, that were assigned sixth, seventh and eighth grade carts. And they went, got the carts pushed down to that hall, knocked on one homeroom door, that, that group come out, got their devices next door, et cetera. You know, like I said, by the, by the end of it, you know, they were getting used to it, so it took like ten minutes in the end of the, end of the day to get all the devices back out to the kids. And we always did that under the cameras, um, out in the foyer, everywhere that the phones were taken in the morning, in the gym, in the front foyer. Everything was done under surveillance, so if there were ever a question, we could go back and pull that footage and show that. In the afternoon, the distribution was done the same, it was done in the hallways underneath the surveillance cameras, so that was there for them. It was a much cheaper, we did not buy lock boxes or anything like that, so that's a possibility if it's something that y'all are interested in doing.
A question for you. What about the parents?
So, east and west, I was at west, east started this at the very beginning of the year. We piggybacked off of them around Christmas. Um, but east, um, with Dr. Ford and them, they sat down, they had like a welcome back to school bash. And so they let their parents and students know ahead of time, they walked them through like the morning procedures, they walked them through the redistribution at the end of the day. And ours was very much similar to the Warren policy. And I think, you know, the more gray area that you put in there, uh, the more problems that may arise. So the more restrictive and the more like, hey, this is what it is, there's no question about it. I, I saw the parents really, like, they didn't have a choice to get on board, basically. So, you know, they grumbled about it, the kids grumbled about it, our middle school levels, I, I mean, I, I spent probably a month hunting down kids with phones in their shoes. I had the kids, you know, reseal it in a hockey bag. I mean, just little stuff like that. But after, I would say about the first month, they finally, and it was just us like staying on it. You have to have your faculty buy-in, you have to have your admin, you know, support. But once they realized that there was no getting around it, they were just like, whatever, I'm tired of fighting it. You know, to include parents, you know, um, but they, they did not have any issues with that. Um, we didn't really have any, I had a couple, excuse me, ESL students that had to have their device for translation purposes. Um, and so they were able to keep those, obviously. Um, I did not have any with I P's that stated they had to have any medical devices, um, like diabetes, that kinda thing, heart monitor, obviously, all those would be exceptions, um, but.
Would you have five or four points for those kids? Do you remember? Was there something?
I, I know the only ones I can remember specifically were our ESL kiddos, um, and it was in their I L P that they're, they would keep their devices because that's what they use for translation purposes. Um, I'm sure our medical, we didn't have any medical students, I only had a faculty member that had to have their device for their, um, monitor on their arm. Um, but I didn't have any other students in the building. The only ones that we had that were allowed to keep them, like I said, were two ESL students that used them for translation. But of course, yeah, if you, if you have that in their paperwork, um, they just got to keep it. So there was no, like, teachers having to handle it, it was like the second they walked in our building, if they were a car rider, they met the car rider faculty. Bus riders met the faculty there at the bus rider drop-off, and that was just the first thing that they.
So it never got to the first period class?
And we did not see any more videos posted in our school building, no more cyberbullying, cause that is a real thing. Um, it, it cut down on so much of that, so much. That was, you know, you're, you're gonna have to be flexible with how your faculty handles it, I would assume. Like, at the high school level, you're gonna have kids driving, you're gonna have a whole different set of procedures that you may wanna do for them. So their, their procedures may look different than the middle school procedures, they may look different than our procedures. Definitely gonna look different than the elementary procedures.
Here's one thing I'm missing on this that I would like to ask about the more restrictive one, cause I see, you know, I can see both angles. But if the policy is you cannot have it, no matter what, from the moment you walk in the building to the moment you leave, why do we even allow them to bring it to start with? Why do we go through investing in money for a lockbox? Why do we have a teacher take up thirty minutes of her morning or afternoon collecting phones? If they can't have it.
Don't bring it.
Don't bring it.
Of course, I think in this one, it does read that if you wanna not go through the hassle of having to turn your phone in, leave it, and if you drive.
Yeah, but you're giving them an option. I mean, I'm saying, if, if, all that, you're, most of her conversation was about process of collecting and handing back out. And if, if you're going, again, I'm not saying this is what I'm leaning toward, but if you're going with that one, and it says prohibited from the moment you enter to the moment you leave, why are we going through the collection process? I mean, that, that's, I mean, that's a question, I don't know if he, they have a, maybe, why they picked to, chose to do that in this policy.
Well, we had to do that during T cap as well. We had to take up all of the devices, so. Every day.
Well, you might have some high schoolers that would go to work that don't drive.
Somebody's gonna pick them up?
Yeah, right.
I mean, I, that's just, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of, seemed like the bigger issue with this is the collection process.
The process, yes.
And what do we do, you know? But I mean, that's, that gets to, that just gets down if we determine to go with that route, there's still open conversation about the other policies. Are there any concerns or on A B or Warren County, or any other comments on these?
It's just another example of a few people doing the wrong thing with something that could be very, very helpful.
Becomes a burden.
Yeah.
Now, uh, you know, and again, this is not speaking to, uh, the use and utility of our Chromebooks, laptops. We have access to that for our students, we're still a one-to-one, and we buy the quantity every year. So, it's not like they wanna have the opportunity to have technology, it's just that their own personal technology is the question mark. Well, based on the public chapter, it says no, you know, during instructional time.
I, I, I do know, adding to what you said, Shane, it's a different world we live in. You know, when I was a kid, my dad or my mom or my grandfather would tell me what I was expected to do when I got off a school bus. Nowadays, that subject's changing, it's as easy as sending a text to you. If your, if your device is at school, but stored away, and then you get it back and you get on the bus. And I was like, oh, Papa says I gotta feed the horses when I get home. That's how they, that's how they communicate now, so.
My devil's advocate to that is, do these videos not happen as much on the bus as they do at school?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I mean.
Probably, probably more so. I mean, that's when they got their freedom.
So I get the, the answer to that, well, when they get on the bus, they can have it. Well, if our, we have to be consistent in our reasoning. If our reasoning is to cut down on bullying and videos that are inappropriate, they're on the bus, that's just as bad happening on the bus as it is in the boys' bathroom, and, you know, it's my fault.
Less monitoring going on.
And less monitoring.
That can be done in the afternoon at their house as well.
I don't know if it'll work or not.
Well, unfortunately, the public chapter doesn't address what happens in the home.
It's right, that's right.
It's what happens in our place.
Well, if, if we go the more, the Norris's, uh, comment of, of moving this to a point in time, which would be the next meeting, is that something we would still have time, or is it really something that needs to be?
Well, uh, again, uh, personally, a- after this meeting, I will develop a, a draft of this. To, to have something for, again, soliciting feedback from these folks and also just sharing with you guys. Can't take any action, cause it's not official to a board meeting. But, uh, addressing what the, um, the, the interest of the feedback that I perceive, plus the conversations happened today, I can generate one. Again, my recommendation would not, if, if we did go something more restrictive, would not adjust our discipline policies. We have a solid discipline policy if you get caught with it. And this one, uh, the, the public chapter requires that the teacher can have the authority to collect if somebody's abusing it. If she sees little Billy sitting there with his phone on his desk or fumbling around with it during instructional time, she has the opportunity to, he or she has the opportunity to collect it and to store it. We've always been doing that anyway. When it's been countable, you know, so.
And I think that we would probably be better off to do the cheaper version.
Yeah, yeah, I was.
I mean, if, if this is what we decide to do. So. Do I need to make this into a motion?
B is pretty restrictive.
For the elementary it is.
If you took out during breaks throughout the school day, school.
If you just took out the grade specific and just said, if I'm not mistaken, am I, am I right on that? The B is the one that's got the.
Yeah, they, yeah, they may possess it.
K five is going to be the same on either one, is that not correct?
Correct.
Uh, so, I mean, it, it, it's not really gonna make a difference in these two policies.
Students may possess wireless communication devices so long as such devices are turned off and stored for the entirety of the school day, unless one of the exceptions above applies. Well, those exceptions are legitimate exceptions. It's not videoing somebody going to the bathroom. So if you took out, may use wireless communications during breaks.
Yeah, if you just took out, well, and what I was saying, Dr. Kim, is if you just dropped the, uh, grade six through twelve
They can have it, but.
K through twelve.
Right, right.
Then it would, I mean, that would still do what the public chapter requires. Obviously, because the T S B A generated this.
Well, it just seems like then the schools could decide, are we gonna let them have them at lunch?
Our baseline.
Are we, I mean, instead of the other way around, cause I don't see how you could have it one way and then say the schools could make it more restrictive than the policy, cause they're gonna come back, they always did that to me. Have you read the policy? Yes, I've read the policy.
So are you, let me make sure I'm, I'm tracking with you. So you're saying, like, when you're looking, I'm looking at
B.
B. You're saying that the section under grades fi- K through five would be, you would, are you using those lines twenty-one and twenty-two as the basis for K twelve, or are you, okay, alright.
And that takes away the collection process.
No collection, I mean, unless they're not using it for one of those five reasons.
The collection's the penalty for, it's not a daily collection.
So then when the last bell rings, they, they can
They have access.
See what Papa wants them to do when they get, I mean, you know.
But, but I, I can see where, I, I'm guessing the reason that Clay chose this one is because that's gonna be, that's gonna be a burden at the high school.
Yeah, but technically, he didn't choose that, he liked that.
Well, he liked it, yeah, he didn't choose it, yeah. Well, and, and what I, I would, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Well, what I was gonna say is, and I wanted to make sure I said this in the presence of like a Renee who's had me, I've worked with Renee. Nathan and Natalie have not, but what I don't wanna have happen is where the, the, uh, parent who's frustrated with the principal said, the principal tells them, well, you can take it up with the director. Like, all my day is just gonna be over cell phone issues. Which it still happens, but now, I don't want it to be a knee-jerk reaction, you know, cause my workload is not just waiting for the next cell phone conversation.
I think the reason that they chose B second to this is because A is going to be impossible to enforce at the high school level and the junior high level. And they, I mean, we've had this conversation before, um, if we, if we go with A and, and not this, they're going to have to enforce in between classes and lunch and all this. You put your phone away, can't have your phone out, put your phone away, and then they're gonna be taking up everybody's phone. So i- it's hard to enforce that, I think that's, I mean, and I'm not assuming that's what they're thinking, but that's what I'm thinking.
That was their argument before.
Yes.
If a child has got their phone on them, and they, the bell rings, the first thing they're gonna do when they walk out in the hallway is pull that phone out. Even though they're not supposed to.
And B allows that area, okay, you can have it out in between classes, put it back up when you get in class. And, and that's, which is like the policy has been.
So you would, you would still have, based on what you're saying, Brandy, are you distinguishing then K five from six, twelve, the way policy B reads?
You're, you're saying the way it currently reads.
I think B is the closest to how our policy was.
So you're saying, keep B as it is, where Kim was saying unify, uh, K, K twelve under the K five. Isn't that what you're saying? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Kim, but that's.
That's what I'm saying, because I, I feel that it's during these breaks that some, a lot of the issues are occurring. Now, uh, again, I think it's just a few, a few kids. The other kids are, are perfectly doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Well, I have seen some video of some grade levels, higher grade levels, and I've seen multiple kids not taking pictures of each other, but you can tell it's getting to the end of the class period and they're looking at their phone doing this. So I've seen that, and I'm not saying these are troubled kids or bad kids, it's just it's because it's there. And it's accessible, um, they're able to, and they do.
I think it's sad that for seven hours a day, we can't be without it. And teachers too, cause we spend a whole chunk of time just with the grownups in the building.
I, I'll make one, may I? I, I will say, you take them up and you have to evacuate your building. And then mama can't get to touch that baby, you're gonna have a problem.
You're right. I have heard from multiple.
That's, that's just a, and I've, I've been in a building where you've had to evacuate, and it is so much easier if you can just text your mom and say, I'm okay, here's what's going on.
That's just the world, that's how, that's how we communicate with our children, that's just the way, world we live in.
And I'm, and I'm, I'm as guilty of it as anybody else.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same. I text my child at school. I do.
I've heard from lots of parents after we had this discussion a few years ago, and I think every parent that I heard from, they like the option of texting their child at lunch. You know, I mean, do they, do they want phones out during instructional time? I think that, I think I said this before, I think we all agree, phones don't need to be out during instructional time, period. And I realize that makes it difficult to enforce on teachers, I know that, I realize that.
But if they have, but if you have a, an electronic device, they can email or whatever as well. I mean, they, they can communicate with their parents without it being a cell phone. So I, I would, I mean, if you, if you said, hey, just make it a hard no on the cell phone, that's totally fine, just don't get it out. But you, if you, if you really need to talk to your child, just shoot them email, or remind message, or whatever. And they can get to every bit of that on their, on their laptop, just, just right there, right beside you.
That's a good point that was never brought up when we had this discussion before, but their school email, you know, they could still email a parent.
You can override as well, remind works just like text.
That I never thought about.
My high schooler has emailed me multiple times from that school. My high schooler has emailed me multiple times from, from school.
So there is a way to communicate.
Okay.
That.
Cause every student has their own school-based, uh, web, or email address.
K three, I don't think we allow them to have access to email. We could turn it on, but our policy has been in line with what most other dis- practice.
I don't think it would be an issue in K three.
I said, you don't have many K three kids that have a cell phone.
Remind to do two-way communication requires the child to be thirteen or older. Same with parent square.
So Kim, what would you like to change on that?
Well, you're, well, Kim, Kim, Kim likes, I'm trying to summarize it from, Kim is, uh, saying the B that you have in your policy, but K through twelve, there is no distinguishing like it is that is printed on the paper. Randy is saying as is. Is that correct, Randy? K through tw- K through five and six through twelve are different. Six through twelve can have access.
I think that's the closest to the way the policy was, but I'm not saying that that's necessarily how, what I'm, I'm not opposed to this. If we have a, a way for parents to communicate via school email. If we have a, a way for parents to communicate via school email during the day, I think that that was a drawback for me the entire time was with being this strict, was not being able to, parents not being able to communicate, and I know, I know, we've all said, oh, well, you can call the school if you have a transportation change or if you have a, it's, but it's, that makes it so difficult on our school staff when, you know, and it's, when they could easily say, ride the bus, don't ride the bus, go to Aunt's house, you know, and so having that option of communicating parent to student during the school day with the email, I think changes. A lot of peo- my, it changes my perspective, so.
And keep in mind if.
I don't know.
If you go to this over B, what we're setting is the baseline. So we wanna set the more lenient one and let the school level administrator decide if they wanna take. If you do this, that's everybody.
That's it, okay.
If you do this, they can decide in their school, well, we're gonna stick by the policy, but we're gonna go in extra steps, is that correct?
Yes, yes, okay.
That would be up to the.
We're gonna put it on them.
Yeah.
If we come, if we pair it up like Kim is saying to K through twelve, that allows each school to do.
Well, you would have a K twelve, it would be uni- the way Kim is pitching it, it would be uniform for K twelve. If they wanted to take it to a higher level, of course, again.
It would have to be every school K twelve, K through twelve.
Yeah.
If we leave it like it reads now, the high school could increase whatever and it wouldn't affect.
The junior high and high.
Junior high, yeah.
Yeah. Now again, the TSBA and their legal, looking at the public chapter, came up with these two options. I mean, I'm, again, I'm not advocating either or, I'm just saying that their policy folk at TSBA is the one that came up with these two.
Well, the K twelve is the same thing as the A.
That's correct.
So, um, yeah.
I'm good with, with B, if that's what, what the, uh, the board wants.
I think the administrators, I don't know, they, that puts it in their hands. If they wanna be strict.
Well, again, Clay said he likes this policy, but if he had to pick, he'd go with B.
Yeah.
And then Wes and Angela echoed the same thing. Now, uh, Renee and Jared also echoed this. Uh, now, they didn't say they liked B in it instead, they just said this because of the, and that's what the lower grades below the middle school, the K threes, they don't like the ambiguity. They don't like the opportunity to gain and lose, just like what was said. Whether non-instructional time, you have access to it, instructional time, you don't. They, they'd rather just see it all or none, that's what the K threes. But again, the K threes probably won't have to be dealing with it as much as your junior high and high school administration will, so.
So, so Clay was okay with them using it during breaks, is what you're saying?
That's what they're doing right now.
Yeah, it's like Randy said, that mi- that mimics.
That's what they're doing right now. Now, I would say it's probably not as restrictive during the class as it, as the policy now has to be, based on the public chapter. The public chapter now says, no instructional time, students can have access to their devices, or devices had to be turned off and stored away. That's what your policy, or your public chapter has, during instructional time. But they were very specific to say only during instructional time, the non-instructional time, you could have access to it ba- based on the way the public chapter reads.
My preference would be turn the phone off when you walk in the door and you turn it back on when you walk out the door. Would be my preference, but.
Well, that, that, what about possession on the, on the body or?
Keep it, they, they could have it on them.
That's what Kim is saying, that's B, K two twelve.
Yes.
That's what.
Yeah. Turn it off when you walk in the front door, you turn it back on when you walk out. That, that would be my preference, but I don't know if we could do that.
Unless it's an emergency.
You've got it, then you've got it, if it's an emergency.
Something happens, they have it, right.
Yeah. But that, that would be my preference.
If, if you have to, if, if we go with a policy where you have to pick it up and you have to redistribute it, that's a heavy lift every day.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I don't think.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just making, I'm just thinking out loud.
The, the collection and redistribution.
Yeah.
Would be super, super easy. At, at our building and down, because they're only going one or two places, but the high school, I, I just, I, and junior high, I, I just can't imagine. And just like what Dr. Kim says, I, what about our athletes, they get out of hour early, how do you, you would have to have somebody give them their phones and you gotta, or at the high school, you've got people that leave or they come and go, and how do you, it, it would just be, it, it'd be something we'd have to navigate.
It'd be a burden from now.
It'd have to be a throw line, cause there were many days that I was the one running, yeah, and.
But, and really, is that, is that worth our, i- i- if we're, if you're using instructional person, person for that, is that a good use of that person's time?
No.
And this will be something that will have to be driven home like an in-service. Teacher saying, this is no longer, it's okay, we got ten minutes in the class, get your phone out and.
E- either, either option, there's gonna have to be a buy-in, we're gonna have to get all the faculty on board to do it. You know, and, and there, there is no, the gray area is gonna have to.
There's an, there's another policy in there that we don't probably need to spend as much quality time talking about, is the physical activity. They have made it explicitly clear that during the physical activity, they're not supposed to have access to the devices.
Well, that's instruction.
That's during that, well, it's, it's, uh, that gets kinda loose, but like, it's supposed to be the free play. I've listened to them argue this debate and, uh.
But they get credit for it, don't they?
No, 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 this is not, this is not PE, this is the physical, this is recess.
Yeah, recess, yeah.
Recess.
For.
Yeah.
For who?
For K, for the elementary, for us to be K five.
Oh, well, they're too busy playing.
But then for the.
They don't mess with their phone.
Well, that's what you'd think, but also for the, there is still, the policy hasn't changed for the high schoolers. Or for the junior high and high schoolers, your six through twelve, they have to get ninety minutes a week. And it's supposed to be based on this, based on that, uh, the newest addition of their physical, their free playtime uh, is, uh, not using their, their devices. So it's supposed to be, they're supposed to be in some type of physical activity, not just scrolling.
Yeah.
Not just the finger.
Right. And you wanna put that in motion, Kim, since you devised that one?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Go ahead.
That they can have their phones on them, but they're turned off when they come in school. They're turned back on, well, if they want to turn them back on when they leave school, but they do, keep them on their possession. But the phones are supposed to be turned off.
With the mentioned exceptions in the policy.
Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I was gonna.
You're gonna.
Well, if you'll second, I'll kinda rephrase it, make sure I'm good, right, is there a second for that?
I think we need clarification before the second.
Okay, here, all right, let me try to rephrase it, you tell me if I'm correct. It is, it is the B policy as written, and basically the only difference is taking off the K through five and making it K through twelve.
So they can use it during breaks.
So, yeah, that's what I was asking, what, what?
Wait, no, 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 that's not right then, you're, okay, it's K, K through five being K through twelve with the twenty-one and twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
Not, not, not twenty-four through twenty-six, twenty-one and twenty-two.
So K through twelve match twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes.
Yes.
And take away twenty-four through twenty-six.
Yes.
Because twenty-four through twenty-six states during breaks throughout the school day, students may use wireless communication devices.
Can, can we add in there, um, about, or would that just be a communication thing on our part, that they can use their email to communicate during the school?
We are required to have in the means of, for the public chapter, in the case of emergency, ways to communicate. We would communicate that, we included with one of the drafts that it could be, just like what I think, uh, uh, Nathan suggested with remind or our, uh, technology that we have, but we could also use the email too.
But it wouldn't necessarily be for an emergency, it would just be ride bus two today instead of bus.
Yes, it can be.
Okay, if.
So, so.
If that's the case, I'll second it.
Okay. So, I'll rephrase and then we can discuss before we vote, if there's any discussion. So the motion is following six point three one two B as written, except it ends at line twenty-two and K through five becomes K through twelve. Students may possess wireless communication devices as long as they are turned off and stored for the entirety of the school day, unless one of the exception applies, emergency, authorized by teacher, manage their student's health, uh, possession required by their IEP or five oh four, or it's being used for a student with a disability, using it for the technology. So those are exceptions that they would not have to follow the policy as, you know, otherwise. Now, is there any other discussion or, or clarification needed?
So during break, if a student is caught with a phone out without permission of a teacher.
That's, that's, that's a violation, yes.
Go back to our discipline code.
Lunch as well.
And the high school principals are okay with that?
They've looked at the two, and again, what I've shared with you is what they've, what has been.
Well, they looked.
Yeah, but they looked at it as great.
This, again, the highs, the three high schools, again, Clay said he likes this, that he would pick B. And both the assistants said the same, they echoed what he said.
But I bet we're taking out what makes them like.
This one, this one is.
Cause that's the only difference.
This one is more restrictive than B.
Yeah.
The, the revision that you folks are, are reflecting or communicating. This one is, you know, as soon as you walk in, you.
Again, I think at the high school level is gonna be extremely hard to discipline and police a, a high school student from taking their phone out during break, you know. Lunch maybe you got people walking around in there, but it's not like the elementary school, I mean, lunch at the high school is a little different. So it's gonna be extremely hard if every student in the high school has a phone in their pocket. That all of them aren't gonna pull it out when the bell rings to go between classes.
Well, that was the argument last time when we tried to make the policy more strict, what, a year or two ago?
If you don't have somebody enforcing it daily, it's gonna happen whether you want it to or not. You can put it in fourteen different policies, but if somebody, if Nurse, if you're not walking down the hall beside me when the bell rings, I'm gonna pull my phone out.
I got you. I got you.
Well, then, if, if.
Class change will be easier to monitor than lunch.
Yeah.
Cause it, cause your teacher should be at their doorway at lunch, at their class change, so that one will be a little easier to monitor, lunch will be really difficult.
Yep.
And what is the violation, where you mention that, like, if, if they see a first violation, do they take it and hold it to the end of the day and then get it back?
Give it back to the student, is, and I don't know what the protocol is, like two, three. I know either, I think if the second one of the violation, parent has to pick up. So, um, I think the third one is like it's held for a few days. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Well, what we need to do at this point, if the motion is made and seconded, we, we have to vote.
Yes.
If you choose not to go with that and you'd rather bring it back up as written, where you, they are available during breaks, then we would have that motion made seconded and vote again. So, we do, by clarification, need to follow through on the current, uh, elements on the floor. So, the motion's been made and seconded for the policy to be K through twelve, turned off the entirety of the day. Um, and, and with those exceptions we mentioned, so, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that, that, that one fails. All right, so is there a motion to follow the B version as written?
I make a motion to follow the B version as written.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion on that? Okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of, of item B as written, K through five, they're turned off throughout the day unless one of the exceptions applies, six through twelve, they're turned off during instructional time, but available during the breaks throughout the day. That's the, the difference in the vote, so, all those in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, um, I'll vote aye as well, so the vote is four to two. All right.
I would, I would like to add though, on, on, for, on Renee's behalf, this is something that it has been revisited and, and now that it's, it's come during in-service, we need to, you know, get something solid as far as everybody being on board, a- as an administrator, I can see at the junior high, junior high's hard age group, I mean, it's, and, and a lot of those kids are really starting to learn how to use a phone, so I can see where the cyber bullying and all that is even more prevalent at the junior high level than it is the high school level, so. Man, it, I think if we could get the teachers involved, just, don't, don't just come to school and, and, well, that's the same thing we got now. That mindset needs to go away, we need somebody to say, I want you to crack down on watching these kids use their cell phone. And I know they've got other things to do, but if you wanna make a difference, you're gonna have to do that, so, I think that needs to be.
Well, I know the principal at Warren, Warren County, when they made that comprehensive move in their district, it significantly improved their social skills practice, cause again, you didn't have kids that were sitting shoulder to shoulder but communicating through text.
Yeah.
So you had that force, you know, just like the communication, like what it used to be several years ago.
And encourage them to use their, uh, laptop to communicate with parents via email. Cause there's a lot of kids don't do that, I mean, I'm not gonna, first thing I do, I'm OCD about those little red numbers on my, on my app, so I'm, I'm deleting emails constantly, but I'm not, I'm not expecting my son to email me either, so. That might be something we need to bring up too.
Anything else before we move on? And that goes back to, that is the one that Clay and high school.
Correct.
That's, yeah, that held a lot of weight with me, that, the high school administrators were more in that direction. All right, then, there are other policies, uh, there's a lot of them, so you've had a chance to review them in your board packet over the last couple of days. I'll ask Mr. Kilson if he wants to address any, but is there, is there any other policy that need to be moved out other, from a bulk action? Okay, so you wanna address it?
Well, the only one, of course, I've already mentioned what I was gonna share was, uh, about the, uh, student, uh, the wellness. Um, the s- the state law, previously for elementary grades required a hundred thirty minutes per work week, full work week, was for physical activity. Again, to say, just to make sure the clarity, this is not PE, which we still require PE as part of their coursework. This is in addition to that, addressing the, as it was discussed through subcommittees in the full house and senate, the issue with obesity at these lower grades, trying to fix it between eight to three hour. Um, so, they at first said sixty minutes, but then through the deliberation and the amendments offered, it's reduced it down to forty minutes. They use, and that's forty minutes can be, but that's forty minutes for K five per day. Per day, for, for P, for recess, not PE.
That was my question, when I was reading the policy, I, I, I thought that's what it, but that, that's in addition to.
In addition to PE.
Whatever their PE time.
So like, at the East Chester where you get Chad Hanna and Carson Hee Hee now, leading the PE.
And you don't have.
Additional forty minutes a day, now, it's, it's gonna be difficult. Because, and that was the argument, the directors and coordinated school health teachers, I suspect, cause I've had a conversation with Kirk Hastings, who is and also a coordinated school health director for his Perry County school district, I suspect that this, after a year of, of utility, is probably gonna be revisited next year. And maybe tweaked a little bit more, it's been tweaked again a little bit, it went from sixty minutes, thirty minutes in the morning, thirty minutes in the afternoon, down to forty minutes, and it can be however that forty minutes need to play out. It didn't say it has to be back to back forty minutes, it could be twenty and twenty, it could be smaller chunks. Uh, for the high school and the junior high, six through twelve, it's ninety minutes for the work week, for a full work week. So it's roughly about eighteen minutes, so a day, if you were to look at it, dividing it out per day. So roughly about twenty minutes per day.
How?
Yeah.
How, how are we going to do that?
Well, the chairman of the State Board of Education advocates for this, saying, I've seen schools use it because, or do it, scheduling in their master schedule. I still haven't seen that one master schedule.
And, and they did not increase the school?
No, no increase in the school day. This, obviously, the things that we.
I don't see how.
attributed as more important, the ability for students to read and grade other.
Right, right.
Um, that is gonna be impacted by that, because you can't, you're still gonna have to have students using the restroom. You're still gonna have to have students going to, going to lunch. You're still gonna have to have those breaks already built in, so.
Okay, when they do brain breaks and stuff, I mean, it's not scheduled. Does it have to be on a written schedule?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
No, it's, it's, I mean, I know that some probably would appreciate something more formal, but yes. But you, because the less formal it is, the less, the likelihood that somebody's gonna be.
Yes.
We'll get to it.
Yes.
Get around to it.
Yes.
And it did say preferably outside.
Yeah, preferably if the weather permits, yes. I suspect that that will be revisited after one year, but the state law does require that. That was one of the big topics of the, this first general assembly of one fourteen.
Any other of those policies you don't wanna talk about or have questions about? Okay, if there are no questions or discussion, uh, we can make a motion to approve these, uh, policy revisions as presented from the T S B A. Uh, in one vote, if, if someone wants to make a motion on that.
I will.
Okay?
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? This is for approval of the policy revisions for Chester County Board of Education from the T S B A. All those in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, they are approved. We did have one single out because it was from a, a faculty member.
And if I could speak, since it's been approved, that first policy, the student board member?
Yes, yes.
Uh, just to let you know that I did speak to Melissa and Stacy Alexander. Jace, if you remember, he was willing to serve in that state board. Don't know anything about that resolution that passed, if we had any success with it. But because of this, uh, I asked Jace and his family if it would be okay. He would start serving in, based on the board opinion here, board vote, uh, in August. So his term starts in August, so he'll be at, at the table with us. Uh, he does not have a vote, but he will have the opportunity to ask questions, to be able to offer feedback. But if it goes into like an executive session, or if we're having to deal anything with, with, uh, uh, staff member issues, uh, they would be excused from those commitments. So, but he's willing to serve in that capacity.
Uh, next is a recommendation from, uh, uh, co- school counselor for board approval of, uh, one of our policy revisions. Have Mr. Kilzer explain why this is necessary.
Well, the, the way it was written initially, this was, policy was actually written as, you know, to have a, a smaller group of students to be able to be considered for the bounty tour and salutatorium for those honored scholars. They had to take a certain level of coursework to, to credit to that and score a certain level of grade point average. The way the policy initially read, it included it on the hundred point scale and also on a four point scale. Those two scales are a little bit contradictory to each other, based on the way the numbering system works. Since the state has codified the hundred point scale in the state law, that an A in the state of Tennessee is a ninety through a one hundred. And all the grades down to sixty being passing, uh, at, now at, uh, in the state level, uh, or all the public schools. That's why we decided to, just to drop the four point, uh, scale from that policy.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? All those in favor of, uh, making this adjustment, uh, for the policy, um, for the three, the three point, four point scale, uh, to the actual grading scale is that, that's consistent with the state policy. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Uh, next, uh, we have our, uh, budget, uh, final draft in front of you in your packet. Uh, we have a recommendation, uh, to look at the budget. Stacy's here for questions as well. Mr. Kilzer can address any questions and maybe adjustments since the last you've had a chance to look at this.
Of course, I'm, I'm gonna say just briefly, uh, I included from last month to this month, the May TESA estimate. And again, remember that the estimate is always based on your, uh, ADM, it's taken in the newer months. Uh, it's still an average, we're still waiting for our June estimate, and then we have a July final. But the trend, again, as I've shared with you last month, the trend that our a- average daily membership has reduced from day one back in, uh, August to May, so we still expect a, a, a lessening effect of our TESA, uh, estimate. However, like in this case, the estimate is only about point three percent reduced. So it's, it's a very small reduction. It should not impact the, the budget as from the May to the June. So I know that's projecting something prophetically, but the expectation is not gonna adjust anything. What has adjusted from your first draft to this final draft is that we have, as a district, decided to end the partnership with Staff EZ for custodial service at the junior high and the high school, cause of the, the lack of acceptable performance. And in that process, we will then return to as we were doing before and hire our own custodians. So then we pick up our own salaries, take care of their benefits based on what health insurance plans they would have. So that's what you've noticed in your adjustment there. Uh, Stacy, you might, is there anything else?
Um, no, the only other thing that I did not include in your first draft was, was the two thousand dollar teacher bonus.
Oh, that's right.
That this guy went, well, to Tennessee pretty much, and I just forgot to put it in there. So thi- this corrected that, this draft, I mean, this final draft corrected that, so that was important.
And that will be, that will go into effect until, is for the twenty-four, twenty-five faculty educators that are full-time. That started in, uh, it's, uh, started in, um, that are not PYEs, partial year exemptions. Uh, that spend the majority of their time with, uh, direct influence with the students. That takes care of everybody except superintendents, instructional supervisors, and also principals. Everybody else, including guidance counselors, school counselors, uh, teachers, obviously, speech pathologists, everybody, librarians. All of those qualify. We submitted a list today, uh, uh, of the June estimate. And, uh, that list will be used, uh, for the determination of the dollar amounts that come. It's two thousand dollars plus the benefits that the state provides us. So this is a state bonus structure. This is not ours. This is the state's bonus structure only.
Stacy, the, the, the way we used to do it compared to the Staff EZ, is that a big money difference?
It's not a big money difference, but we do have that ninety day period where we still have to have Staff EZ, because that was part of the contract. So it wasn't a complete wash, because we still had to have funding for the contract for those ninety days plus.
So from the minute that I sent the, the owner, we're ending our partnership effective X date. Based on the contract, they have a ninety day window, so.
And it goes over both fiscal years, so there, there was some still left there. And it, but, and we also, if you recall, we had to have an additional custodian for our new buildings. And then we moved our, um, substitute custodians just into the regular line, line, so, yeah.
That was already in the, uh, draft.
It was, it was in the first, yes.
Any other discussion? How about a recommenda- there is a recommendation, is there a motion to accept the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget on the final draft?
I'll make a motion to accept the budget.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved.
And the budget committee, if I may interject, now, budget committee is gonna be meeting here next Monday. Uh, we have expectations, h- hopes that we'll have a budget passed before this fiscal year ends. Uh, the next week is when. The next week is when the county commission general meets.
Well, they have to have that public hearing before the county commission meeting for the tax rate. And then the county commission meeting will be after that public.
So she's not as optimistic as I am.
I'm not.
Get that, get that Emerson guy out of workforce.
Uh, just a couple more items, uh, kind of, uh, that we need to address tonight. Number one is, of course, we're coming up on the new, uh, new year, so we have to just set our new meeting schedule. Uh, you have the proposed dates for the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, keep in mind, we set these, but if something comes up with a board member or we have plenty of notice, they are adjustable as the year goes on. This is just our, uh, base schedule from the, from the starting point here. So, uh, is there any questions about those or any that stand out that might be looked at before we vote? Uh, is there a rec- we have a recommendation, is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting schedule.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that schedule is set again on.
And now I'll go back and share this with the principals to find out which dates they wanna host the meeting on sites, so.
And again, as long as you give us, you know, a couple of weeks' notice, if somebody has a work event come up or they, one of these needs to be changed, never hesitate. We can do that if we have enough notice, so, to let the public know.
It's ten day, it's ten day window, ain't it?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Uh, and then we have a bit of a housekeeping item, uh, involving our administrators, and I'll have Mr. Kilzer, uh, explain this.
Well, for Renee and Jared at, uh, the junior high, the local bank that, that the school uses to add them to the bank accounts, just like what Shane had to do a few years ago, we have, the, the bank, the local bank requires that the, the board minutes reflect that their names re- res- uh, regarding their, uh, administration at the schools. So, and I know this is redundant in some cases because the high school hadn't changed. But rather, since Nathan is a new at the middle school and Natalie would be new also, just to make sure we're not leaving any stone left unturned, just go ahead and identify all of the administrators at their specific schools. If in case the middle school issue comes up and it's also in same cir- circumstance, it requires board minutes, then this reflects all of them.
Uh, just need a motion to recognize these administrators for, uh, for banking purposes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
Troy, you're, you're gonna list all the administrators on this motion. Is that what, what you're saying?
Well, you're doing it right now, yeah.
Yeah, they're listing.
It's in your agenda, yes, sir.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, they are.
Is that a new rule?
I think it's one of the bank policies. I, I've, now, I, I don't wanna just speak to the bank, but, uh, we had to do it for Shane. If and when we fill the, the position at East Chester, will it have to come before the board again?
It could.
And you just add it to the list.
Well, it'd have to be reflected, that's the way that.
Reflected in the minute, so it has to be in the agenda.
Again, if that, if that specific bank carries East Chester's account, then yes.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, then we'd prob- of course, again, it just depends, I don't know if the assistant principal at East Chester.
They don't, it's the bookkeeper and the principal.
Yeah.
Well, the final thing we have, uh, that's all the business, but just any updates the board may have questions about, or, uh, any updates you wanna share tonight?
We got permanent power on both the multipurpose and the Ag Auto.
Yeah, I saw you guys working on the Ag Auto, what, uh, last weekend or Friday?
Uh, it was this week.
Oh, was it this week?
Monday.
Monday, Monday, Monday. Yeah, um, and again, I encourage, of course, again, it's, it's kinda hard, you don't wanna get in their way. But again, the Ag Auto shop is gonna be, as the reflection here reads, uh, expectation, the end of this month, first of next month will be the punch list. So transition will happen outside in the hallway. We've got some of the hardware that's gonna be in the Ag Auto and then some other, um, items like the lifts or it's stored at different locations, so.
They were laying the floor in the hallway.
Good.
Oh, when I was out there.
Good.
That was yesterday. Looked really nice.
Do you have any you wanna mention? Okay, any other questions or anything that needs to come before the board? All right, thanks for everybody's participation, patience. Uh, our next meeting will be July twenty-second, Tuesday night at five P M. That will be back here in the, uh, board conference room as well. And with that being the end of the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
See, Ben, that takes care of your ten day notice right there.